Very good afternoon, everyone. Today is March sixteenth, two thousand twenty. This is a work session for the Salisbury City Council. And we have City Council President Jack Heath is on the line, calling into the meeting. Our first item on the agenda is not able to be here tonight, so we're going to move right ahead to the John Deere Drive issue. Bill Holland.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Brock Park, we're looking for Park and Associates, representing the Fishers. They've told them they didn't need to come across the bay.
Okay.
But this really shouldn't take too long. Then we're coming back with the John Deere Drive, Wawa annexation. I just started, like, two years, pretty much, two years ago today. Look at all the dates and everything. It's been somewhat in a holding pattern for a while while they were doing negotiations with Wawa, whomever. After this was introduced to the council, it went to the planning commission, it got rezoned as non-residential mixed use. Read the fiscal impact statement was prepared by Chris Kubiak, estimates that the annual cost to the city would be approximately thirty-seven hundred dollars per year. The fifty-six hundred square foot convenience store with gasoline pumps and canopy will have an estimated value of approximately one point four million dollars, which would have an estimated tax revenue of around sixteen thousand, which would be a net of about twelve thousand six positive for the city. In the annexation agreement, the developers would be required to pay the development assessment fee of approximately eighteen thousand five hundred, this goes into for re-beautification, restoration, and revitalization of existing neighborhoods. That's, that's about it.
Any questions, anybody?
This is the, I mean, the next phase after this would be moving forward to set the hearing for, or set a date for public hearing.
Jack, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Yeah. Yeah, we're good.
That's it.
You have consensus?
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Best of luck moving forward. We're excited for a Wawa.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I love Wawa. Love Wawa.
All right, next up is our Business Development Director, Laura Soper, on mobile vendor licensing and fees. Laura Soper?
Hello, Council.
How you doing?
To give you some background, a few months ago, I met with administration on the mobile vendor licensing that my office oversees. We were looking at some ways to streamline it, so that's what's brought me in front of you here today. I've made some changes to the proposed legislations, just to kind of help clarify who needs a license and who doesn't, clarifying that they don't need it during a local festival or city endorsed event. We typically had not enforced that before. I just added some language to clarify that. Another change was having the surety bond requirement run concurrently with the license. Previously, the legislation stated that it had to go a year past the expiration, which a lot of our licensees was having, they were having an issue getting an actual surety bond that ran past. So that is something that is up for your decision. We changed the application fee to a flat one hundred dollars for new applications and fifty dollars for renewals. And other than that, there's just some small redefinitions and changes, so I'll entertain any questions.
Do you know, how many current licensees you have?
I think we have around thirteen or fourteen.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Could you ask Laura, was there an intent or a reason for having the month difference at the end of the term? Or was, was that just the way that you came out because of the date of the legislation?
The month difference? Where was?
Are you referring to the surety bond?
Yeah, whereas the thing expires a month afterwards.
So it was actually set to expire a year after the expiration date of licenses. So now we just have it running alongside of it. So once they are ready to get their license, we'll ask them to get their surety bond, and we'll issue them both on the same day, and they will run and expire on the same date.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, but my question was, was there a month differential with the way it was set up for a reason?
I, Mark, did you have a chance? We talked, I talked to Mark's office last week about if there was a reason why it was set the year after the expiration date. I wasn't sure if your office had found anything. Diane, did you?
It's been like that since I've been here, so.
Yeah. I don't know if, Mark, were you able to find anything?
No. And I, the, when you say, the month, are you talking about the effective date, Jack?
Yeah, I'm talking about the whole, one of the biggest things on here is the change to match the anniversary date of the date of the, yeah, of the fee term.
The fee term.
So why was it a year af, why was the surety bond held a year after? Was there a reason to do that, or was it just, that's the date to pick?
The, the surety bond that we're talking about, if we, I think, I'm still looking into that, is the answer to that question. And to find out whether or not that's going to put us in a bad position. So I, I let it go through without making any change in it, because this was a work session, but that is an issue that I'm actually checking on right now, so.
I'd like to have that information before we go ahead and vote on this.
Yes, I'm going to get it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is everybody okay with this, once we get that?
Yeah, the only-
Information.
Yeah, I want that information, but I had another question, just in regards to background checks. So basically, the onus is on the actual owner of the business. At one point, I guess the city was doing the background checks, so that's the change?
So we were doing background checks on the owners and everyone that worked on behalf of the business, which could very much add up quickly for the business owner, having to pay forty dollars for every person, especially if there were changes, you know, they wouldn't be in compliance. So essentially, we'll still do the background checks on the proprietors of the business. They'll pay a hundred dollars flat, and the police department will still do the background checks. But then, we'll kind of put the onus on them to say, everyone that you hire must be in compliance with this legislation, so.
Which means they have to have a background check.
And will that be submitted to the city, I guess?
That will be part of the application process. They'll have to sign a guarantee that they're, the people they have employed for them are in coherence with the legislation.
For background checks of business owners.
Even the business owner, the person, the self-employed. I'll jump in here, too. We're not, we're allowing the business owner to hire the people that they feel comfortable with hiring. They're recommending that they do background checks on their employees based off of the nature of whatever mobile vendor license that they have and what their providing is. But that is going to be on them. We're going to make sure that the people who own the business and the primary operator are good to go. But if for any reasons they hire people that have issues, it could jeopardize their, their mobile vending license with us, but we're not going to, on an ongoing basis, if they have a high turnover of, of employees, like a mobile food vendor, like a food truck or something, we're not going to keep that on file. That is going to be on their, we don't keep that information on other restaurants or other providers like that, so that's kind of the, that's the big change.
Yeah.
But that, we have this standard, but we're not going to go and keep a file on every single person.
Yeah, because I'm like, would it be necessary to, to do a background check on every employee if the employer doesn't prompt to do? Is it?
And I don't know if it is. I think we encourage them to, and really hammer away at the fact that, you know, your license is at stake if you're not following the legislation, and we do find an issue. That being said, I don't think we want to hammer down on them if something comes up and, you know, take away their livelihood.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Yeah.
I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm seeing where this is coming from, because you're in public, you're dealing with the public, and, okay, yeah, I understand.
And it was, it was chief's recommendation that we keep the background checks intact for the-
You don't have to go no more.
Okay.
So is everybody okay moving forward, once we receive the information about the surety bond from?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the Salisbury Green and Lot sixteen. Procurement Director, Jennifer Miller. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. This is Brett Davis. He's joining me this evening, in case anybody has any questions about what I'm here to present to you. The first item in your packet is a resolution allowing the transfer of the sale of Lot three or the Salisbury Green to Davis Simpson Holdings. Sorry, sorry. I got that wrong. And that, that's what the resolution is. And then, the other item is the Fourth Amendment to the disposition contract between his company and the city of Salisbury. And what that would do is actually several things. It would reference the transfer of ownership, all of the conditions that were in the original agreement of sale between the city and R. Miller Properties for the Salisbury Green. Those conditions would stay intact and pass to the new buyer. Lots sixteen and three, the Salisbury Green and sixteen, would be consolidated, so that it would just be one parcel for development purposes. Any re-subdivision that's necessary would be borne by the purchaser. And then there's just a different set of timeline dates or milestones that would be recorded in the, in the amendment for the purposes of the land disposition contract. So it's really just for your review tonight. If you had any questions or concerns or comments, if not, the idea would be to bring it to a legislative meeting for approval.
I have one more question. I just want to clarify.
Sure.
This, it's, the only change between this and the last contract with R. Miller's is that this one doesn't require that we have to have a liquor license in place. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you talking at Mike?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, because we, we, the only item we did actually change between ourselves and the beer garden is that we asked that there isn't a requirement that we have to have a liquor license. We're going to operate a restaurant. It will definitely sell alcohol, but our concern was, we build forty-nine apartments, and then someone in the county removes our liquor license for a month, and then you guys take our forty-nine apartments. As you can imagine, that kind of was deeply concerning. So we will, we will, we will build a restaurant with a, a beer garden, I promise.
There's a requirement that you build a restaurant?
Yes.
And that, yes.
Yes.
And it will be a beer garden style or something like that, I think is what it's requiring, but.
I can, just so you guys know, it'll have actually more outdoor seating, and we'll be supplying, we're shooting for sixteen parking spaces, so by combining the lots, we'll actually be able to gain sixteen parking spaces for the restaurant, which means we won't actually be adding to the, any parking concerns downtown. We'll have as many outdoor seats as he was proposing. Our restaurant will actually be two stories with a mezzanine. We're actually going to have probably the largest glass garage door you guys have ever seen. It'll be twenty-four by twenty, so it'll be a two-story glass garage door, so people will be able to sit on the water and enjoy seating. So it'll actually come out to be almost thirty-six hundred square feet inside and about, let's say, forty-five seats outside, including a bar-style seating outside, so.
Yes, yes, and yes.
It's going to be really cool. And then all you guys have to do is pay for it, and, no.
So is there, I guess, to his question, I guess, there's, there's, we're not going to?
The other one had very specific requirements.
Yeah.
We, we went ahead and settled with him and did a final settlement.
Got you.
And he was supposed to get his beer license and get the thing open as soon as possible. That didn't happen. So the same requirements as far as design and expectations are there, we just don't need to say you've got to have a liquor license by a certain date.
Okay.
It's, I mean, this whole project will take longer to complete than a beer garden would have anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other questions, anyone? Jack, do you have any questions?
No.
Everyone consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds lovely.
We'll move it forward to a legislative session then. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is our budget amendment for the elections. We have election, Waukesha County Board of Elections Director, Anthony Gattarres. How you doing? Good afternoon. Are you, who's taking the?
I'm sorry, I don't have the voice to do it.
Okay. So, just reading the first page, it says, "Upon completion of the two thousand nineteen election process, the clerk's office received the attached final invoice from the Waukesha County Board of Elections in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, nineteen cents." The bill amount on page one was twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, fourteen cents. The estimate for that amount was forty-five hundred. There were funds in the election count totaling nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. A budget amendment in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars is necessary in order to pay the invoice. So, any questions?
I, I have a couple.
Okay.
Mr. Gattarres, this is Jack. Question for you. Why is the estimate, what's the estimate, so low, and the actual is about five hundred percent, but what's the original supposed to be?
This is our first, twenty nineteen was our first election, conducting city election with our new, well, at that time, relatively new paper ballot system, so we didn't have the previous numbers from the city was done on the touchscreen. We didn't have that as comparison. And as, as we were here, I believe, about four years ago, after that election, it was recommended that we use that, the new numbers, as a baseline going forward, which is actually what we did. And so we, we provide the estimate prior to every election, and then we go into tracking our actual expenses. And I believe most of you know Deputy Director, Ms. Church, she's got a strong accounting, HR background. She does that tracking for us. And prior to this meeting, she went back and double-checked and made sure that our, our figures were accurate. So it, it's a matter of, we hadn't done a city election on paper before, so that's a change from, from previous that we couldn't foresee, you know. This now becomes our new baseline. The, the twenty nineteen becomes the baseline for twenty twenty-three. We also had some new employees that she thinks may have taken longer to complete the work. And we also had a higher turnout. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers. Diane, do you happen to know, was it twenty percent or nineteen percent turnout, something?
I'm not sure, but it was higher than we thought.
It was significantly higher, so that of course means more, more work to do to produce your election.
Yeah, I, I can understand the increase in voting. But here's the, the issue that I've got is, we're stuck here with a bill where we made a budget that we are now over by sixteen thousand dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. And, and the other, the other question I have for you is, if you've got an invoice from a customer, from a supplier that gave you that kind of an estimate, what would you do?
Well, certainly as a government agency, we are required to conduct elections, and, and that actually does happen with us. As a matter of fact, the State Board of Elections gives us an annual estimate in January, February, which we present to the county council. They provide us the money, and it's very regular in our business to go over that estimate, sometimes by tens of thousands of dollars, when anyone who's familiar with Maryland elections knows that we're a state that likes to innovate, likes to add things. We, as I said, we were now in a paper ballot system. Prior to that, it was a touchscreen system for the previous city election. Another change that we're anticipating before twenty twenty-three is going to a new poll book system. And you'll also have SDR, same-day registration, that, that you'll be having in twenty twenty-three. That requires another piece of equipment and another election judge. So Maryland elections are always adding things, per se, and, and so, yes, we routinely have to go back either for a supplemental or try to guess, so to speak, in advance of how much we're going to need.
So I guess the question is, if you had another machine and another election judge, that's for each polling location?
Correct, times five, yes.
Has there been any other election that has, where there's been such a discrepancy between the proposed amount and the final invoice amount that you can recall?
Not that I can recall, no. We, we only do years every two, and now every four years. So in my tenure, no, not, not as, as big. But again, as I say, in, in preparation for this meeting, we did ask our Deputy Director to go back, and she did double-check and verify that, yes, these, these were the hours worked, and these are the actual costs, which, again, we will use as a baseline going forward.
So, and, and I see here in part of the invoices, that you had some temporary workers, and I see that, how many hours they put in. What, explain to me temporary workers for, is, was that just a hire for people that were just for our election? I mean, I, I don't know, explain their actual job role. The other ones I think I can get a grip on, but I'm trying to figure out what temporary workers meant. Even though we had a higher turnout.
Judges and judges.
Even though we had a higher turnout, I mean, how many temporary workers and what they do?
That's correct, and, and I believe, I'm not sure if she broke that down into number of workers, but, again, the formula we've used in the past is to, to do it by category. And, so yes, to answer your question, temporary workers are hired, and they're to track whatever time they're doing on county election work versus city election work. And they do run that through Ms. Church, and she does keep track of that. And, and the other thing I was going to say, oh, for, for this election, we were actually overlapping with the April. So it's very important for us to keep separate, you know, when, when they're working on city work. An example, when the mail comes in, then they separate it out into city residents and county residents. And they do the city work first, because we have timelines or deadlines to meet for your close of registration. And then, they work on the county work for county residents, and those worktimes are kept separate.
I guess the temporary workers, are those the ones, when we go in, there's somebody there where you go up and you tell them your name, and give you the paper, then you go get the ballot? Those are the, the temporary workers?
They could be working in the reception office, they could be working to supplement the absentee staff, they could be working in the back on supply, so sure, a variety of things. Testing the equipment, those are temporary workers, yes.
It's, it's such a discrepancy in it. I, I don't know, I think I'd like to have more discussion about it, to, I, I don't know if we want to look at old invoices or compare it to another election, even a, an election that's similar in, to size to our city or something. I, I just, that's a lot, that's a big difference. I, I think it's-
Well, were there any other, like, in areas like Pittsville, were there other, was there a discrepancy there for you guys?
For the other six municipalities in the county, we don't put on their election as extensively as we do for you. For example, we'll send them a street file, ask them to verify it, and then we'll prepare a precinct register a week before the election. They'll come pick that up, use it on election day, and then we'll go in and do the voter history. So it's a much, much more limited for the six other municipalities.
And again, how did you estimate this?
Well, the estimate was done using our previous city elections, which at the time were touchscreen elections, and we were trying to estimate for a paper ballot election. That's one factor.
Did you know from the last four years to this four years that you would need more because of the paper ballot? I mean, an estimate of more employees?
Well, as far as the staff time, the number of employees, we were, when we were in before the council, well, I came before the council, four years ago, it was recommended that we use that as the new baseline, which we absolutely did. We took that recommendation, and it turned out to be significantly lower.
So you didn't hire any more than the last four years?
That I can't speak to. I, I don't know how many employees were hired in twenty seventeen versus twenty nineteen.
See, that's what I'm trying to, see, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because in two thousand fifteen.
Or fifteen.
Okay. First election was two thousand fourteen, fourteen.
Well, you're in the odd year.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be an odd year.
And the hiring, that probably would have, the, the more staff you needed, would have probably made the estimate a little higher to me, because you would need more, more workers, more money.
Whether we hired two or ten, since they're all keeping track and reporting what work they're working on the city. In other words, if, if two people are working full-time this week, that's eighty hours on city work versus ten people that are working eight hours that week.
For the county.
If I'm explaining that correctly, the, the amount of work is the same, whether it's done by two people or ten, and should come out the same, because the pay rates are the same.
I, I think one of the things for, for me is, that when I, I'm, I'm looking at the, so we go from a touchscreen, and then the next election, it's still computerized. So I, I, did the paper cost more? I mean, I really want to think about-
It really does. It is counterintuitive. You're exactly right. A lot of people think, oh, we're going to paper, be a lot less cost, it's significantly more cost. We're also seeing that in our county, even federal, state elections, too. It, it doesn't make sense, but that's the reality of it, yes. It's a much more extensive testing process also.
I would-
I guess, did you, the last county election, because there was a, one election that kind of like went on, the Board of Education election.
Yes, we had to recount.
Did that cost, did you have a budget amendment for the county in that one?
I, I want to say we did. We've actually been, over a few years, because the county is doing a zero-based accounting method, and so that, that does kind of tend to lead to that. For our department, again, one example, the biggest example is the estimate from the state board is usually very, very low. I can tell you that right now, for the April primary, we have a few items such as network routers that were being charged. We did not know that that was coming our way a year ago, January, when we did the current fiscal budget. An additional SDR judge, we didn't know that was coming. So, again, that's very much, that's very common in our county, state, and federal elections, that we get low estimates and, and have to go to the county for supplementals, yes.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I mean, I'm just thinking, for my own, this is my own checkbook. I'm looking at this as if this was my checkbook. And I, I just think it's such a, like, if I got a doctor bill and there was a discrepancy, I'm going to ask a lot of questions. My personal thing is, at this point, is, I don't know if we can table something or offer to have more conversation about it, but it's just, it's, it's a lot, the budget amendment in the, that, it's like sixteen thousand plus dollars.
Yes, correct.
Right. I mean, that's a chunk of change.
Absolutely.
From what we were, so I just, I, Mira, I'm going to yield to you, but my personal thought is, I think we need more discussion about this, to really look at this invoice, and, I mean, the city, of course, wants to make sure that we, you know, pay our bills and everything, but we did budget, and we did, we spent a lot of time with our budget, and this is just something that is a little above- And this is just something that is a little above and beyond. I mean, it's more than 10 or 15% more, it's more than, so I just think that we just need to be a little bit more, look into it a little bit more.
And we stand ready to provide whatever information you have, or you would like, sure.
Jack, did you, I think maybe we could table this to the next work session?
Well, I think compared to District Attorney Harris and his crew, we should have specific questions that if we're going to extend it, we should have specific questions that we can ask him to provide the information. If not, then we're going to be in the same position we are today.
Yeah, right.
So are there specific questions that we can ask?
Questions like, okay, could we have invoices of how much the paper?
Right.
I believe, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, we've turned over those, or we'll make sure we do another copy, but...
I'd have to double-check.
Sure, we'll be glad to turn in second copies if you like.
Yeah, because you said they were expensive, so we just want to know to make sure that...
I like to be able to compare an invoice from where we, you know, judge's manual, $700. I'd like to know more about temporary workers. How many temporary workers? What were their role? Voting system tax, are they temporary workers? I don't know. And I don't want to nickel and dime this, but $16,000 is a lot of money.
Yes.
Sticker shock. Sticker shock, yeah.
Yeah, it just...
Well, I can actually say I see a certain business on here that did a lot of this work from what I can understand, and some of the prices from what I know from election judge manuals are, that was pretty reasonable. That I can say, that was pretty reasonable because election judge manuals are pretty extensive, because I have been an election judge at one point in time. So according to how many election judges you had, how many manuals had to go out, $700 is reasonable.
I don't know, that's just my thought. I mean, of course, we devote...
I mean, I understand what you're saying, though.
Yeah, I don't know what Jack thinks or Mira or whatever, but...
Another point I was going to offer is that going forward, we could, we're very willing to amend the agreements going forward and add in that we will provide detailed work logs down to the minute, well, probably the hour or quarter hour, so that not only our own internal double-checking, but the city clerk and her staff can be a triple-check. I mean, we're we're willing to do whatever you'd like us to do. But again, we we do keep track and we did double-check and we're we're ready to provide whatever other information you'd like. Here's another wrinkle for 2023. We're we're talking about redistricting. So the question is, do we go back 10 years ago and, you know, how are we going to estimate for the 2023 elections when you factor in how much time will it take to do the redistricting work as far as data entry and and proofing and how many temporaries? Well, that was done 10 years ago.
And well, in the middle of that, 2015, we went to five districts from two.
There's that also. So it's, elections is a kind of a, we're not an agency that does the same thing every day, five days a week, 365 a year. Every election has its own, I I wish it had a flat line to it, but unfortunately, it doesn't seem to go that way. But we're we're ready to provide you whatever you'd like.
So you you had a couple of questions, there was a few items that you wanted...
Or perhaps if you could submit those to the clerk and give us a few weeks to get your answers for you? That that might be all right?
Yeah. All right, why don't we do that? We'll get some questions together and submit them to Diane and Kim and then we'll send them over.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll we'll table it until the next work session, give you some time to get answers on those. All right? Jack, you okay with that?
Yes, fine.
Okay. All right, we'll do that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Just a couple of things before we go today. That was the last item on our agenda. First, I want to make sure everybody understands, I don't know if Keith can zoom on this a little bit. It's census time. So everyone should have gotten a census paper in the mail. And on that, I recommend you can mail it in. You can also go online at www.census.gov. There is a code on there and you can, this is the first time we can actually do the census online. I did it the other night. It took about six or seven minutes. So it's very easy to do. We encourage everyone to please, 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 complete the census. This this helps us with a variety of things at a variety of levels of of government, everything from grants, everything to congressional apportements. So the census is very important that we that we do this. Next, we we don't really have a full update on on as things are changing minute by minute, hour by hour with the current COVID-19 coronavirus situation in the country and the state. We do know that the governor this afternoon has announced that all restaurants, bars, gyms have been closed, I think today as of 5:00 PM. What we do encourage everyone to do is many of these places are going to be open for carryout. So I do encourage everyone to use Grubhub, use any of those outlets. Some of those are waiving fees to place orders, order locally, support a restaurant as much as you can, if it even mean means we're doing carryout. So, because it's going to be a tough time for our small businesses over the course of the next couple of weeks and months, maybe longer, hopefully not. Just, again, use caution, wash your hands for 20 seconds, use hand sanitizer, make sure you use appropriate distances, just like Andy did. You cough in your, in your sleeve. The, I know that there, I know the mayor had made an announcement this weekend and, you know, a couple of things, if you've got to pay bills for the city, we do ask that you either mail that in or do that online. Do not come into the government office building. And if you, and as we are in a state of emergency, if you are struggling or not, or not out of work, your city bills, late fees will be suspended through 30 days beyond the end of the state of emergency. And the governor has also ordered, no water shut-offs, no utility shut-offs, no evictions during the state of emergency. And so that's a key point. Any questions about your utility bills, dial 1-833-SBYCITY, or you can go on to the city's website at salisbury.md and you can find the Finance Department that way. Same thing with licensing and permitting. You would call the same number I just said and you can find it online. They're not accepting anything in person. We have several city events that have been canceled. First, the Run SBY Marathon, half marathon, has been canceled for this year's race. Anybody who registered, the funds are not refundable, but they are going to be deferred until next year's race. And any questions, that would go to sbymarathon@gmail.com. The other issue is here, any and all events permitted through the city of Salisbury between now and Easter, 4/12/2020, and possibly after that, are canceled. No city services will be provided to these events. No leases of city property during this time period will be honored, and deposits will be returned upon request if you have to cancel, or you can also just reschedule the date at a later time. Third Friday in downtown Salisbury is canceled this month and, which was, was that just past weekend or is that just coming? It would have been just...
Just coming weekend.
Okay.
Coming weekend.
April's third Friday is currently is still scheduled, but again, that's tentative. The other events that have been, are going to be rescheduled are Average Joe's Half a K, which I have already registered for and am doing serious training for.
Are you now?
I am, I am. Scrapple sandwich every other day.
Yeah.
Hops on the river.
Food with the guys.
The Census 2020 Neighborhood Walk and is going to be rescheduled, and the Spring Ball Pickup is going to be, is going to be rescheduled. So the other thing is day-to-day life. We encourage our citizens to continue to support local businesses, like we just said. I think DoorDash, Grubhub, and Uber Eats have suspended local franchise fees during this emergency. We encourage citizens to visit your grocery store and general merchandise stores during non-peak hours. And just make sure that we follow the CDC guidelines and doctors' visits for those, your provider may offer remote clinical appointments. Citizens are urged to find out if this option is available as an alternative to visiting a doctor's office, or just call your doctor's office and and talk to them. Public health information, citizens are urged to continue to monitor the Wacomico County Health Departments and Peninsula Regional Medical Center's social media feeds and websites. Residents may call 410-341-4600 during during regular business hours or 211 after hours for any information on that. And so those are some some key things. Another, a couple other things, all municipal parking lots will be free of charge until further further notice, and permit parking will still be enforced. So those are, any and all youth and community center programming is suspended. So just we'll keep everyone up to date on those items as well. And Andy, anything else?
Yeah, just to clarify, that youth program, that's in the city-owned and operated community centers, not, I'm not sure about if there's other private entities running programs they they may be operating differently.
Stay safe and stay healthy.
Wash your hands, please.
And look out for each other.
Yes, if you do, that was another point I wanted to make, thank you, Michelle, is if you have a neighbor that's elderly, check on them. If you've got a family member that's elderly, check on them. If you need to get something for them, be a good neighbor and help them out.
No boarding. Take it easy on the tiki guys.
Thank you, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.